All right, everyone, six o'clock. Call water. Is there any, at this time, any agenda additions or deletions? To be put on the agenda? Anything, Bob? Cash? I don't...
I don't have any.
Okay. I would ask for a motion with regard to the July eighth minutes. Meeting minutes? Do...
I do accept them subject to deletions or omission.
Is there a second for discussion?
A second.
Is there any corrections or deletions?
We had a correction from previous minutes before on paragraph three. That should be stated that it's not the sand pile. It's assault that state uses. Just to clarify it. And also below that, their next line. Said the road crew went to the gorge road and it was Bob and myself. Bob next to me.
Was that duly noted?
And then on paragraph six, first paragraph there. The last sentence there should say due to. It says doo, 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 doo. There's two do's there, should be one. I can't hear you, Cash. It's a double doo-doo.
I didn't even could've heard it.
Um, the only thing I was gonna say is, um, under twelve where your administrative assistance report, Janet. You reported that at our workshop and not in the last select board meeting. So, that, that wasn't at the last select board meeting. And then, um... Did everybody make the last meeting? I just was wondering. Normally we mark who's here and who's not.
Bob's here. Look, Cash, Monday I was not here.
But you were here for the meeting.
Yeah.
Alright.
Is there anything else? Anybody? Alright, there's been motion made, seconded. We've had discussion and, uh, we did duly note some missteps. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting those minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Warrants are right here if anybody's interested. Select Board has looked them over. Public comments? Any public comments?
Just a reminder we have, uh, Rob's Days this weekend. Barbecue going on.
What's the hours on that down at the fire station?
I would say probably around, uh, I would probably start cooking around ten o'clock probably, Mike. Probably around ten and will be ending around two thirty, three o'clock. No fireworks this year.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, highway.
Uh, we're currently, um, working on East Timoth Road with extensive ditch cleaning, tree removal. To drain, uh, get the water off the road with the high shoulders. That's our main project for this, started last week and most this week coming.
Anything else?
So basically you're taking those, that lip off the side of the road? Is what your goal is?
Yes.
Um, I keep getting asked about roadside mowing. Are we still making progress or did the mower have to go back?
We're making progress till this morning when rural town needed more back. And then we're gonna get it back from them after they go through. And more and more has been going last week. Especially on the west side of town.
One individual on East Timoth Road that did, uh, have a great deal of concerns is pleased with the work that you've done, not only with the ditching of course, but the mowing as well.
Moving back.
Cash, uh, yep, one call. Minor really. Going out, coming out from, uh, North Shrewsbury Road onto Coal River Road right there by Reynolds's. You cannot see up the road towards Shrewsbury till you're right out in the Coal River Road.
We're actually up there mowing Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Is that before that?
Yeah, I believe it was before that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Joel was up there then, Thursday.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The only other thing I was gonna ask is, um, are the reflectors that we put on the drive bridge by Pankowski's broke? Or can they, do they just need to be reset?
Got to be reset. And that's hopefully tomorrow with a rainy day project, we can...
Reset them?
Reset that.
Yeah.
Do you have anything, any questions from the public? Um, is it all?
Think so.
Alright, old business. Anything that we wanna bring up on the old business? Let's get down to new business. Want to give us an update? Uh, Janet, on the naming of the streets in, uh, Coburn Sterling Park?
Yes, indeed. It's been an interesting adventure dealing with two state offices. Who apparently weren't communicating very well. We've got the...
He has nothing to do with it.
Yeah, you know, we've got the State Housing Authority, which they have all that information. Cause I got in contact with them and they say, oh yeah, those streets are named and it's, and we are, we're all nine-one-one compliant. It's fine. The only problem is that the state nine-one-one guy didn't have any of that information. So, they have now been introduced by email. And hopefully they will move forward.
Alright, so it's out of our hands though as far as...
At this point, yes, I will touch base with State E-911 in a week or so to make sure Tyler has all the information he needs for nine-one-one. And if not, I'll nudge a little bit, but I think, I think they got the message.
Yes, I appreciate that. Any questions? Now, river corridor bylaws.
Yes. This is something that, and it's, it's important on a going forward basis for Clarendon. Because we had all of the flood damage that we had due to the storm. FEMA, in order to get the higher percentage of reimbursement from FEMA, you need to have river corridor bylaws, um, flood hazard bylaws adopted by the board. Once you get that, instead of getting, I think, instead of getting the lower one, which I think is twelve percent, you ratchet up to seventeen percent. So, there's definitely a financial incentive to adopting these bylaws.
Back when this was, a couple of years ago, when this was introduced, uh, we actually had some folks in from the Regional Planning Commission. And it, and as it turns out, it was the carrot on the stick. Because a lot of these things that, I think it's even worse now, that they're introducing and all these things is, if you wanna get a couple extra bucks. And it affects a lot of the people that live along the river corridor. So, back when that was introduced, I want to say maybe, what, three, four years ago?
It's come, it's come up two if not three times at this point. Um, the last time was about a year ago.
But Carol Geary was the lead person that was coming. She was also on the Planning Commission and stuff. And at that point, the Select Board wasn't interested because of the the nudge that was coming from the Planning Commission. So what's the board's pleasure?
I'll speak as one person, I still don't want any part of it.
No, I think we should steer right there.
I'm just one person, I don't want any part of it.
No. Because for what you're gonna get out of it, it's gonna put, uh, townspeople in too much of a bind, I believe.
Plus it dictates, dictates the, uh, setback boundaries and stuff of actually, not only homeowners, but the crops and anything and everything.
There's a hand up out there, I think?
Yes, Mike.
For overlays to that. There's a corridor and then there's the runoff area over that. So, you need to look at the maps that are up and what they show. And I think you'll find that they're quite extensive.
Yes.
There's a lot of places now that aren't affected by it. But if you look at the maps, they wouldn't be affected by it. So which would mean you couldn't build anything, you couldn't remodel anything. If you had a house that burned down, fifty percent of it was gone. You'd have to go through all sorts of legislation to rebuild it. So, take a little look in there.
Yes, this is some of the conversation that we had up to and including, um, folks who built long before those streams even migrated or the river even, you know, was an issue. Built homes, it would possibly cause them to have to go spend all kinds of money for flood insurance and all these other things. And this is why...
If you don't have flood insurance, if you're in this corridor, you have a problem.
Yep.
Not interested.
It looks like the majority, if not all. Cause I don't wanna dance that dance.
All that.
Oh, thank you. I use your counter.
Alright, so I think we know where we stand on that. Uh, model flood hazard bylaws. This is something. We had an issue during Irene, we had some... How many times have we met down there? Mike, you were down there. Bob, you were down there. How many times? Uh, and they came up with all these people walking all the way down from Shrewsbury and all this stuff. And, well, we should have this flood port and ensign, we should do that. To me, it's the same thing. You know, not...
Take your poll.
Huh?
Take your poll.
We don't want them doing it?
Totally agree.
I don't want them doing it.
Not interested.
That a majority?
That's majority. Without you.
I absolutely do not care to get involved with this because it's the carrot on the stick thing here again. And I don't wanna even think about it.
Just purely for your information.
Very good.
My attention.
Right, no. We could send a message back if they call again, just say, we're not interested at this time. Thank you. Um, and then we have some, uh, concerns about ATVs and that because of the town forests and stuff. But I did ask, and I think Janet did a good job on this, to get some, uh, you know, some guidance about what, ordinances that could be looked at. So we have some examples here and stuff. So I think that when we get into our policy workshops, that we've been, that we've already had one. Then let's look at this, uh, information. Just for, you know, interest to see what other towns and not just towns, but states have come up with ordinances.
The ones that you have in your materials are coming out of Wisconsin predominantly, okay? I, I will do further digging. But so far, it, Wisconsin has been the only one that at least has them available online.
Nothing in, nothing in state? No communities in the state? Other than much state law?
Right, other than state law. But, and that may be the difference. Because other states may not have state laws relative to ATVs. I don't know. But I'll keep drilling.
What I would like to, in your research, possibly would be to look in what our state statutes are, what other communities in our towns, uh, or in the state do because it's, it's, if the state law says, well, you have to have a license to drive or, you know, whatever that, all that information is. Maybe you might know and you're familiar with that.
Need a plate on your vehicle to drive it on the road.
On...
Each town, set aside a road or a piece of property, whatever, so that you can ride on. It's up to each town to make that.
And I would like, I would like to know because, like the town, we have the state forest over there. If I'm a landowner with a hundred acres of land, do I have the right to tell people stay off my property? Yes, Marge?
If it's anything like the snowmobiles, yes, you, you have the right to take them off.
The ATVs have to have a written permission on their person when they're riding on your land.
And every land they cross.
And every other people's land they cross. And usually it is fishing, game, wildlife, the handel's, the violators.
Back in the day when we all used to go from Spencer Farm all the way upstate with the snow machines during the winter. You know, they would, they had specific, the, uh, what the heck was that organization?
Vast.
Vast, yeah.
They still exist. They still exist.
Those are all pre-permitted, I believe.
Right. So we didn't have to really get down to the nickel dime parts of it, but...
Benson has some of their town roads listed for ATV travel.
Along with...
I think it actually has to be listed that you can travel on these roads. It's not, if, if there's, you can't just ride on it just because you want to.
Yeah.
This, the town has to say you may. Otherwise you can't.
Well, I think... And this is, I think, now that we're reviewing policies and updating and stuff, this is why I think it's important that, you know, we're getting some ideas. Uh, so let's see in state what we can come up with.
I did look quickly at the state laws. And one particular part that I didn't like was the fact that if we have a road that is not plowed, that is listed as a town road, um, the state law says that an ATV can be driven on. If I understand it correctly. So we need to list, my opinion, as one of five is that on no, town property should we have ATVs unless therefore emergency issues.
Would you be, like the Horton Road?
That would be the Horton Road, yeah. Yeah.
Why would you wanna restrict riding on, let's say, the Horton Road? If it's not plowed? What differences would make to the town?
Well, I would, all the concentration would be there. I would first look, have a, uh, question to Vermont Leaks of Cities and Towns. Are we liable for somebody that gets hurt on that road being a town road?
Right.
If we're liable for it, no, I don't want them on it. And if we're liable for any of our roads for ATVs and snowmobiles, then I want nothing to do with it. And that's just me.
Bicycles.
Bicycles, no.
Liable. Right?
If they're riding on town roads, sure, I suppose. I don't know, if they're riding...
Maybe they can worms off, they don't, they can worm themselves off.
Well, I, I think there is Vermont laws, just like, you know, you have to share the road with a horse and a bicycle. So bicycle is considered a vehicle on a Vermont road, actually. So they have to abide by the laws of, of travel.
Yeah, we, we've had the sheriffs come in a couple of times for riding up and down the Creek Road abreast. In other words, you're single file, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think...
You can be two, but you've got to move out of the way if a car comes. If I understand that correctly.
Steve told me, this is coming directly from Steve Menard sitting right here, that, uh, you're not supposed to ride two abreast on a class three road.
Okay.
And it's, but it was a class three road. And there's, there was something else, so I can't remember. Uh, something about a flashing light or...
Well, uh...
And I can't remember.
They have to abide pretty much by the same laws of a motor vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
You gotta stop at stop signs, there has to be lights on them, you know, all that stuff. There are laws, specific laws for bicycles. Horses I don't know, other than we have to kinda go around them kinda easy. But, uh, now for, um, I'd really look at the liability issue and see what the liability issue is, even for bikes for that matter. I mean, are we gonna... Are we gonna ban bikes? I don't really think so. But these off-road vehicles are more dangerous and people get stupid with them and...
I owned horses up in Chippendale.
Yeah.
And, uh, at that time you were, uh, a law officer in town.
Yeah, more active back then.
Right. But we were supposed to stay single file.
That's my opinion, but more research needs to be done.
They went off the road.
Yeah, they wanted to test whether their GPS had to go up that way. They went up that way, made it off the first river and then they...
You have New York plates?
That's history, there's been no problems. Why do you wanna ban something where there's been no problems?
I think the issue that was brought up was on the town forest we have up on East Street. Right. That is the bottom line. That's the bottom line, in my opinion, is we just outlawed, totally outlawed at that area, for sure, the use of ATVs in that, on that property. That's it.
Which at one point I thought that that was already, well, I guess I, I misunderstood, cause I thought years ago when you guys had the, the team of horses going and logging, I thought at that point all motorized vehicles had been outlawed up there. I didn't realize until this, when we just logged it here a year or so ago.
There was a discussion.
I didn't, I didn't realize that we were allowed to have motorized vehicles.
But we were supposed to put a sign there that duly noted and the sign was never...
No motorized vehicles.
Right. And the sign was never erected up there.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The past... An ordinance would have more teeth than...
Well, it would, would announce with a sign that there is an ordinance.
Right.
So I think that, yeah.
Yes, and work would need to be done on it.
I think, uh, Marge, you were part of that conversation when, uh, it was, when we were talking about the parking area. This was before we lumbered everything and this was, uh, I, I think Jeff Taylor was still alive and it was reported that somebody was riding in and out of there with their four-wheeler and stuff. And that's when we said, okay, we look...
Guy voted or whatever and came to consensus, he wanted the sign, but it never was put up.
That's exactly right. So I think first, first step, I, I mean, we're working on policies now. We can put something in writing, uh, regarding that. But I think that short term, maybe we could get to the, get a...
I think I'll have a conversation with our forester.
Joe?
Joe Peterson and...
See what he comes up with.
Yep.
Alright.
But you know, while, while we're looking at that, uh, I would see nothing wrong with going along with what Rick says. Liability on our roads with one of them things. I think it would pay us to just look. I'm not gonna say we should or shouldn't do anything with the ordinance on that at this point. But I do think it should be looked at a little deeper.
Yeah, but you know, this is a case of, uh, as we, we've started um, going down to, you know, upgrading our policies and stuff. So that could be some research done too, so...
Yeah, do ATVs, are they required to carry insurance? I know snowmobiles are now.
I don't know. I have no idea.
I think just if you're in a club.
Yeah. We have li, personal liability on ours. And mine too. On the farm.
I know on the snowmobiles you're required.
Yeah, it's required, snowmobile. I don't know about ATVs.
I, I have no idea.
Required to have a registered plate on it if you cross a public road.
On ATVs?
Yep.
But not snow machines, or?
Yeah.
Snow machines are registered too.
Was, think so.
I actually introduced legislation up at Montpelier to, uh, have the ATV laws mirror the snowmobile laws. Exactly. Um, and so that, that means helmets, uh, stickers, whatever is there. Of course, we, there's not very few in, in Vermont, actual, if you will, vast clubs for ATVs. There are some where they can actually drive around and, and have some type of a, an area to do that.
One in West Rockland.
Yeah, and I think there's one over toward Pultenway. I may be wrong, but somewhere up that way. So, but, and I believe maybe up north, I'm not sure. But, um, you know, ATV seems to have a lobbyist that's...
A transmission line that goes over to west side. A lot of people use that.
ATVs?
There and up in Concord, Gilman areas.
Yeah. Yeah, up in Gilman outward.
That's huge up there.
Forty-six KV line.
Yeah.
I wonder if they have rules? Is there anything that...
I'm sure they do. I think it's all, all like a vast type thing, like a snowmobile.
There are some clubs around.
At one time it was called VASA. V-A-S-A. At one time, cause snowmobile was vast and ATVs were VASA.
Yeah, I believe you're right. Not to mention it.
So you'd need to research, you'd need to research VASA and see what they have.
Alright, well, like I said, we're working on policies, so, but the town forest, I think we can cut that off, right off.
Yep.
Just by putting a sign up.
You were gonna follow up on that.
Yeah, we did say, but they would not be in there.
Alright. Talking about updating town policies, we did have a, a, a meeting. We went over some stuff. Uh, one of the things that we discovered, which would probably, uh, be to our advantage as select board members is each, uh, department of town. For instance, the treasurer's office, uh, Gloria, your office, you know, come up with, look, review some of your policies and stuff. And if there's something in that department, as well as cash, you know, and stuff like this, that we should pay attention to right away to upgrade. Some of the policies are all the way back to nineteen ninety-one, right, Rob? Didn't you?
Some of them were, I think, were older than that.
Yeah. And so it's obvious that there is uh, some need for attention here on the town policies. But one of the things that we did talk about was the, uh, the ordinance for marijuana dispensaries. We had a long discussion, uh, those members that were present. And, uh, we have an updated, um, policy draft here, if you wanna call it that. And it was, uh, the three members that were present then agreed to what we have on the draft or this. And I did not want to, um, commit to adopting this as an ordinance until we got it into a public forum with TV and all this kinda stuff. So the two members that weren't present, I want you to kinda read that over and stuff and see if you have any questions. Otherwise I would, uh, appreciate a motion to, for adoption of this ordinance. And then it would be posted uh, so that the public can review it. And they would have, I think, forty-four days, um, to turn in a petition, change it, or take it off the books. But the select board does have the right to create an ordinance. Yes, Marge?
Didn't you read at that meeting, verbatim, that it said that they have a right for a petition, but they only can petition to have it come up for a vote? but they only can petition to have it come up for a vote for the townspeople?
It was a vote to remove it.
I think what you read from leads, you read something that night.
Yes.
It said that they could have, they could come up with a petition, but then if they come up with a petition, the people vote on it, you can't. They can't just remove it with a-
I don't think that was what that said. I thought it was that they can petition the board to not have that an official ordinance and then it would go. Then we would suggest that it goes to a vote. I think that's-
And I thought it said it was, it was an absolute vote to the voters. But I mean, usually a petition, you put a petition to appeal, like on the planning commission, you know, goes through a process and, but this, I think, said it goes to the voters.
Let's take that.
What paragraph is that in?
Uh, second paragraph, there is a typo. So a petition for a vote on the question of approving the adoption shall be cited.
Signed.
Signed.
Signed, signed. Yeah, there's an H in there, there's not an N. Yeah, shall be signed, no less than.
Five percent.
Five percent of the qualified voters of the town. I think that's what Marge is.
But I mean, they can only, they can't petition to appeal it. The petition doesn't appeal it, but a petition-
Requires it to be voted on.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
And that's how it gets overturned.
Yes, and if it doesn't, if there is no petition by that percentage of the qualified voters, then the select board has the right to create this ordinance.
It goes through.
So it isn't totally voter approved then?
No, because it's an ordinance.
Well, it's, it's put in place by us, but if it gets challenged, it goes to the voters and the voters have the choice to-
Yea or nay.
Yea or nay it, basically. And if they nay it, they essentially overrode us and it goes away.
See, we cannot do zoning ordinances. That has to go to, go to the public. But we can do like this, adoption of an ordinance. As is noted, the ordinance can be questioned by the voters and then there's a procedure to your point, Marge. Stand corrected or sit corrected.
Whatever.
What's five percent of our?
Well, goodness, five percent is actually, that's more than, what's required for a petition to get your name on the ballot, Gloria? Is that three percent? That's only one percent. So five percent then is what? Because you need twenty, you need twen-, I was gonna say you need 25 signatures, right, to get on the ballot, something like that, 20? So 75.
I used to get about 110.
Hundred and a quarter in that area?
Yes.
To make, to get something on the ballot.
To make sure everybody's on the, on the grand list, you know, that signs it.
That's why you always got a little extra in case, that's how we did that, you're right. So with that correction, just to look for a motion from the board.
I would make the motion that we would adopt this with the correction to, and go ahead with it unless there's any other corrections. And I didn't see any, but I would, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
You're second for discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, and this is to adopt this ordinance and we'll, we have to have it posted right away, both at the, our usual points that we post things and then on line two, Gloria. So if we adopt this tonight, then this has to-
It takes effect in 60 days.
So there's been a motion made, seconded. All others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Looks like unanimous. Let me put this in my file. Okay, and as I said before, we're going to go on with the meetings and soon as we get here back from the different departments and towns with suggestions only involving their particular departments, then we'll consider having another policy meeting. Now, it was suggested, instead of having every other Monday opposite of our select board meetings, it was suggested, I think, Rob, did you suggest this?
Couple of us did, Cash did too, I think.
Okay, to have our policy meetings an hour before our regular meetings. So in other words, at 5 o'clock in the evening.
And I, and we determined that we would not do the next meeting. We were going to go to the last meeting in August for our next one.
That's right.
Was what, I remember.
Is the second August.
The second August meeting at-
Right.
August 26th.
To give us, because we wanted to give departments time-
Right, time to turn in their-
To be able to take a look at some of theirs.
That's not a box of donuts, is it?
I would go ahead and make that a motion that we set our next ordinance slash policy update meeting for August 26th at 5 o'clock to last an hour prior to our select board meeting.
And Cash seconds it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll say that's unanimous. Now we have the wood lottery winners. Before we pick names out of the, thank you Gloria for doing that. Cash, how many loads do you think that, that is, because that's going to, how many names do we want to pick?
Approximately five to six loads. But I was wondering if we should actually pick six in case somebody backs out.
So do it in order?
Do it in order.
If you have, if you think you're going to have like six loads, then I would pick a couple more than that.
Right.
Where's your list, Gloria?
Because here's all the names and that looks like more than six tickets.
Yeah, I was just going to look and see.
I did it. Oh, you stole it.
I'm just curious how many are on here, because we've got- Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yeah, you got 11 total.
There's one there that's-
One that's doubled though, there's one double.
That's taken care of.
Okay.
That's taken care of. So you got-
What's that?
How about if you draw four or five losers?
Six.
Quicker and easier, wasn't it?
So you still got 11. So what, so what my recommendation is, as you're pulling them, I'll number them.
Right.
So that it starts at the top and, you know.
That's where I was going to go. All right, you being the, I don't want to do that, pick it. All right, number one would be Blaine.
Blaine Goode?
Yep. I'm also doing this.
Pass it down to Robert.
Stan Jacobowski, number two.
Oh, yes.
You brick ones, you pick one.
That's seven.
That's seven.
You want to do eight? Seven, I'd do it.
I think seven will do it?
Yeah.
And if-
Basically, I'll use one of them as an alternate.
If somebody backs out.
If somebody backs out.
Okay.
Do we need to keep these for the next draw?
I would say that, I would say that the ones that did not get drawn remain, remain in the drawing for next time.
Right, okay.
And I've got them numbered so that you've got another.
Now, I'm going to pass this off to you, Cash, because-
Well, Gloria, we'll have Gloria notify. Take a copy of that, because it's got numbered.
Yeah.
We'll have it on file somewhere.
Yeah.
So if somebody comes in, they can, you can tell them we're ordering them.
That's good. Town officer reports. Do you have anything you want to?
Um, so I've prepared and given you the budget status for the end of this last fiscal year so that you can review all. And so we had a really tight year, it was really good. We budgeted a deficit of $14,000 to lower our fund balance by that $14,000 and we actually came in at a deficit of almost $9,000. So we almost met that, so that's good. If anyone from the public would like a copy of this, these are by no means final financials for the year, because they do a good snapshot of where we landed, so.
Good, anybody have any questions sitting there? Kelly, do you have anything you'd like to-
I do. Ritter Holdings contacted me, they're working on a plan to get all of their taxes paid up and current.
So you were working on that, that's good. Gloria, do you have anything that you would like? Art, you're from the listers department, is there anything that you?
Mike, the grain shaw's got heat pumps put in last week, so.
Oh, good.
They have, we have AC there, the board wants to have a meeting there, we have AC there. Heat there, supplemental heat in the winter, I mean the fall, not for the winter, but for the fall. And then on spring.
How do those typically work, the heat?
They said that, so the machine is, the machine's outside the grain shawl and it senses the temperature outside the grain shawl and adjusts to whatever the, whatever it needs. If it's cold outside, it'll, it'll heat, if it's warm outside, it'll cool. There's occupancy sensors on them, so when you get in front of them, they'll, they'll kick on. There's a timer on them, so I got a program for the church group and they, they were there Sunday and they didn't turn on any of the window air conditioners, so must be right for that. Probably going to eliminate two window air conditioners upstairs and leave a third one, just leave one in the windows.
In case.
As a big party shows up or something, you have to keep up with it. But they say they're, they, I've been told that they use a third less than a window air conditioner.
Two-thirds less.
Two-thirds less.
Two-thirds.
They, they do better air conditioning, right, than heat? I mean, that's the, that's what they're really good for, right? What'd you say?
It's just reverse of an air conditioner.
Sure, sure.
You're sucking the heat out of the air, the air conditioner, and then it's just reversing it back toward the opposite.
To do the other way.
Yeah, so it won't do the winter, but it'll do like November, it'll do like March, you know, supplement some of the oil costs and stuff.
You guys still have fair amount of meetings and stuff, but one in that building?
Yeah, we have a fair amount still, yeah. I think the school used it all last week for, for education stuff, for tutoring and stuff because, yeah, the whole month of July they're using it.
Well, thank you, guys. Do you have anything that you want to report, Janet, under administrative assistant report?
Nope, I think we covered everything.
Hey. Bob, do you have any concerns?
No, I think I'm good for tonight.
Cash?
Just let the townspeople know that as soon as the mower gets back for mowing road sides, we'll be back at it again from rural town.
Just can't hang somebody back and pick up truck, you'll be back there.
Show me how to do that.
I'll write the come to a mailbox.
Donate one gallon of gas, how was that?
And that's coming from a safety cam. I'm good. You got anything, man?
The only thing I would say, Cash, you know, the, I think you and I talked about it too, the rumor was a few years ago that they might be interested in selling out their share. Would it behoove us to make an offer?
Definitely. They may, they have to decide what they're going to do first.
But if we, if we took a look at our numbers and made an offer, do you think they might consider it?
It's possible.
I'd like to maybe propose that we add that to our next, add that to our next meeting to have a discussion to see between the treasurer and the board if we have the funds to maybe make an offer.
Uh, not on my highway budget though.
I've come out of your equipment budget.
It comes from somewhere.
Not on my company budget either.
I think it's something we should talk about.
Yeah.
I'll get some information.
We'll take it on Matt's budget.
Give me a hundred, use one of them, Cash, I found a used trailer for you, give him a used tractor right now, more.
What was it, like $11,000 or something?
Our share-
$6,000 split, weren't it?
Before the split.
Yeah, I think our share was $18.
I was trying to think, I was thinking 14 to 18, somewhere in there.
I think that's about right. The figure, whole figure of 35 sticks in my head.
I think so.
So now it's a couple of years later, or more than a couple.
It's been, it's been that way now for, boy, it's been longer than you think.
Yeah, it has.
It's been a while.
If we-
It's been a while.
Took a look at it and said, $6,000, I was thinking.
Hey, you guys like spending money.
I think we got to have a discussion next meeting.
Okay. Do you have anything else? I'm good. Okay. I didn't have time to-
So moved.
Is there a second? All others in favor? Anyone opposed?